Good evening. Welcome to the December 10th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. All members are present. I do apologize for starting off a little bit late. We had an executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining with the American Federation of State and County Municipal Employees, AFSMI Local 1703 Unit One in accordance with Mass. General Laws Chapter 30A Section 21A 3, as it would be detrimental to the town if we negotiated an open session. Would you all join me for the pleasurable allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we move on to our first appointment, I just want to make mention that when I said "all members are present," happily so because we had a medical issue with one of our members recently, and Ed Loud had a little bit of an episode, and I'm sure he wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'm lucky I'm here because on Saturday, December 1st, I went to cardiac arrest at 4:45 a.m. The Wilmington Police responded, but my daughter Brianna saved my life by starting compressions right away with the help of the dispatch on the phone. Officer Kevin Skinner was first on scene, and this is hearsay because I've been told this 100 times. Kevin Skinner was first on scene. He shocked me once, took over compressions until the paramedics and the fire department showed up, and that's when the compression started. I actually left my house with no heart rate or beat. They revived me in the ambulance. They rushed me to Lahey Clinic. But I cannot thank, first of all, my family, my daughter, my son, my wife. My daughter in Worcester was there. Lickety-split, she was there by 6:00 a.m. Just incredible. But Kevin Skinner, Kyle Skinner, who were on scene, they're phenomenal. They will be in my heart forever. And I've talked to the chiefs, and I plan on seeing them this week in person. But also, I had to write this down because I didn't want to forget the other officers that were in the office. Cabral and Lieutenant Pooper were also there. They participated in saving my life. But also firefighters Kevin, Kyle Skinner, George Robinson were on the ambulance, and Matt Tremblay and Paul Henderson were on the engine, and they all participated in saving me. I cannot thank them enough. I also want to thank out for the outpouring of everyone on this board, including the town manager in Beverly, who have reached out to me and my family and a lot of people in the community. This is a great, great community. We are lucky to have such compassionate and phenomenal firefighters and first responders. I will be indebted to them forever, but I always was before. If you've seen me on this board, I've always had a lot of respect for our first responders, and I always will. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I really appreciate everyone on this board. Greg, Michael, Kevin, Jeff, Jonathan, and Beverly, thank you so much for reaching out to me and my family. I am super glad I'm here. I wanted to be here tonight, and you'll see me sitting up pretty straight because of the compressions. My chest and my back are sore as hell, as you can imagine, but it's a happy pain. Super happy that I'm here. And my daughter Brianna is a rock star. She always was, she always will be, but start compressions right away was what saved me. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ed. We're happy you're here as well. And I think you're a little crazy for being here after what you just went through, but certainly happy that you're here and our thoughts and prayers are with you.
It's Jonathan's birthday, so I had to be here for Jonathan's birthday.
That's right.
And it's Mike's birthday this week too, I heard too.
Yeah, at the end, Mike and Greg are going to sing to Jonathan, so if you want to stay tuned for that, please do, to the very end.
But Chief Begonis and Chief Mahoney were also -- I've talked to them several times, and I'm going to get together with the firefighter department and the police department to -- some surprises coming. My wife and I want to do something, and we're going to do something special.
Thank you.
If I could, I just want to just, I think, express what we're all feeling. We're really excited to see you. I was never so glad to see you then when we walked in there, and we're so glad that you're okay. But I think it helps us keep things in perspective, right? And we're going to talk about some important issues tonight like we always do, and we may not always agree on them, but we just experienced, you experienced, just how precious life can be. So, we're really -- I'll keep that in mind as we go through discussions tonight, that let's keep it in perspective, that we're all lucky to have our health, and we're glad to have you back, Ed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see you. I was surprised, Ed, seriously, to see you in the other room as I just attended moments ago, and I'm really glad you're okay, and thank God for your daughter being there, man. Seriously.
Yeah, thank you.
And I wish you and your family all the best.
It means a lot that we do towns business, but how heartfelt every one of yous were, and I mean that. There's a human side of us. Not everyone sees that, but that we are all human, and the caring and help is just incredible. Really is. Not only, like I mentioned, you all, but other members of the community that have reached out, some leaders, some past leaders. Just incredible. So, I really appreciate it.
Real quick, Ed, I haven't known you that long, but I know in the small chat we've had, you've been raving about your family a lot. You're a very genuine family guy, and like the other members, I was really surprised to see you here, but very pleasantly so. And I know that Christmas this year will be especially special for you and your family, so glad to have you back. I think you're a very important member of this board. You bring a lot of knowledge of zoning, but more importantly, I think you're a good person. You care a lot about this community, and you care a lot about your family. You're a good guy.
Thank you.
So, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the Treasury warrants. We have the transmitting of Treasury warrants 22, 22A, 23, and 23A. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. McCoy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous? And we're going to start with our public hearing first. I'm going to skip the first meeting because we're beyond, we're at 7:20. So, I'm going to ask Michael J. Newhouse Esquire on behalf of Daniel Fogg, DJ Auto Sales LLC, for a public hearing to request to obtain a Class II vehicle sales license at the property located at 121 Main Street. Mr. Newhouse?
Do you want to sit at the table?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Welcome back. Mr. Loud.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, Michael Newhouse, Council for DJ Auto Sales LLC, which is a Massachusetts company that's been organized by Mr. Fogg, Dan Fogg here to my right. His fellow member and partner in that company is his brother Joe. They both have longstanding ties to the community, and in the business, from a business perspective, Mr. Fogg has operated an auto repair shop, NOS AAA Tire, for over 20 years now. His family before him had operated the same business. We're here in accordance with the provisions of the bylaw that permit a Class II used vehicle sales license for such an operator of an auto repair shop. As the board is well aware, but perhaps for the benefit of folks who might be interested, that particular provision is very limited ability to sell used vehicles. There are limitations in the bylaw which Mr. Fogg is aware of, and through this process has made sure that he understands, namely that the vehicles wouldn't be closer than 20 feet from the street. There are limitations as to the size of the for-sale signs on the vehicles, up to 20% of the area of the windshield, and he understands that he can only offer two for sale in that manner at any given time. So, it's really, as is the case with most people in Mr. Fogg's position, it's to enhance his ability to repair vehicles, and he comes across vehicles that folks may not be in a position to spend, you know, an exorbitant amount of money repairing and might rather try and sell them and get into a different vehicle. So, the property is located at 127 Main Street. It's across from St. Dorothy's Church as a point of reference. We have, in fact, sent certified mails to -- certified mailing to the abutters, and we have the green cards here for the recording clerk. So, with that, is there anything else that I forgot, Dan, that we need to add?
No, that sounds good. Yeah, basically, just opportunities to help customers and nothing jumping out, but like I said, if we could get the license to, you know, get to the auctions and buy vehicles just to have on hand. That way, if a customer goes over something they can't spend, then at least something's -- there's another option for them, that's all.
Thank you.
With that, we'll have to answer any questions.
I'll open, before I go to the public audience, I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions. Yes?
I'll just say quickly, I'm going to support the measure tonight. I know the family a long time. You run a reputable business. You've been there forever, and it's right away, when you talked about the autos AAA, that's what I refer to AAA Tire, obviously. It's been there forever, so I don't have an issue supporting the license. And I want to say good luck.
I'll go to the audience if there are any questions. Seeing none, I'll ask the town manager for the recommendations from the various departments.
I have a recommendation from the police chief, Michael Begonis. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the Class II vehicle sales license on behalf of Daniel H. Fogg, DJ Auto Sales LLC. Recommendation from Al Spalding, Inspector of Buildings. I have reviewed the above-mentioned application and have no outstanding zoning issues. Recommendation from the fire chief, Joe McMahon. After reviewing the most recent request for sale of automobiles on the above property, the fire department has no objections or modifications.
Okay, so that there are no questions, I'll take a motion.
Close the hearing.
Okay. Take a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
By Mr. Eaton. Seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion on the close of the hearing? All in favor? Genereous? And now, we'll take a motion to approve the Class II vehicle sales license for DJ Auto Sales LLC.
So moved.
Located at 121 Main Street, and it's by Mr. Loud and seconded by?
Al second.
Mr. Eaton?
Just a point of order. So, it actually is 127. There was, I think, in the, one of the communications, a mistake in the, it was referenced as 121. It is 127. All the appropriate abutters were notified, so there shouldn't be any other action necessary. I think it can be approved tonight, just noting that it is, in fact, 127 Main Street.
Okay. And with that, there was a motion, and there was a second. Any further discussion on it? All in favor? I'm not unanimous.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And we'll go back to our first appointment at 7:00 for Joe Devlin Esquire on behalf of Supertarget Liquor Massachusetts, doing business as Target, a request to change management from Thomas Leach to Kristen Haber. Hi, how are you? You must be Kristen.
Kristen.
Okay.
So, at this point, if you could just perhaps outline the proposed change and what you're seeking from the board?
Yep, so the old store manager, his name is Tom Leach, and he's no longer with the company. I have been there at the store for six months now, so headquarters is requesting that I be put on the documentation as the alcohol manager for the store.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this application for change?
Just as a point of order, anytime there's a change in the manager with an alcohol establishment or establishment that has a license for alcohol, the board is required to review and ultimately authorize that, and then it goes to the ABCC, Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, for their consideration.
And we all set for recommendations from the various departments?
Yes. Recommendations, the police chief, Michael Begonis, notes upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the newly appointed manager, Kristen Marie Hibber.
So, with that, do we have a motion to accept this change?
So moved.
Mr. Loud?
Second.
Motion, seconded by Mr. McCoy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Genereous? That was easy, huh? All right. So, that will be forwarded now to the?
Right. The board needs to have sign us on these licenses.
All right, our next appointment is at 7:20, and we're still a little behind, but we're catching up. And that's with Michael Woods, DPW Director, Paul Looney, Town Engineer, Valerie Gingrich, the Director of Planning and Conservation, to go over the Woburn Street and Lowell Street intersections.
Could you wait us for a moment? I'll set up.
Quick.
Change of manager.
Paula Looney, Town Engineer, here presenting conceptual design for improvements to the intersection of Woburn and Lowell Street. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear us this evening.
Paul, would you mind introducing us to the?
Yep.
Oh, that's in the, okay, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead again.
It's okay. Quickly introduce the project team here. Director of Planning and Conservation, Valerie Gingrich, and I will be co-project managing this project for the town. We're also here tonight, we've been engaged, TEC Engineers, Engineering Consultants, done a lot of good work for the town in the past, and they're Mast dot pre-qualified. Here presenting this evening is Liz Altman, Professional Engineer and Project Manager for TEC. Also in the audience this evening for support is Director of Public Works, Michael Woods, our Operations Manager, Jamie McGoldy, and from TEC, Professional Engineer and Principal, Kevin Dandray. The purpose of tonight's meeting, first and foremost, is to get feedback from the community while we're in the conceptual design phase prior to advancing through the design development process. Second, we'd like to ask the board for vote of support of the project at the conclusion of the meeting this evening. Now, as Valerie's going to expand upon later in the presentation, we'll be applying with state planning agencies to fully fund construction of this project with state and federal funding. On part of that application process, we score higher points on our application if we show a united front, so to speak. This won't be the only bite at the apple. It's the first meeting, but it won't be the last opportunity the board has to comment or ask questions on the project. As we advance beyond this into preliminary design, we'll have what's called the 25% Design Public Hearing, which we project will be at some point late spring, maybe early summer This is a just general locus of the area. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Woburn Lowell Street. We have Woburn Street that runs north to south. Lowell Street runs east to west. Heavily trafficked roadway corridor. Lowell Street connects Route 38 to Route 93. We're seeing about 30,000 cars per day, per weekday, rely on this intersection, which is, certainly makes it one of our busier intersections in town. Surrounding the intersection, you have commercial development built out around three corners of the intersection, and you have a vacant lot here in the south westerly quadrant of the intersection. It's currently a project in front of the planning board for a mixed-use development. I'll run through some challenges or issues at the intersection. First and foremost, it's single lane in all four approaches to the intersection. With the 30,000 trips per day, I'm sure you can imagine we're at overcapacity for the intersection, which equates to just longer queue times. My biggest concern here, though, is safety. What we're seeing here is, this is certainly one of the higher crash rates in town for an intersection, and it is well above the state average. We're seeing about one crash a month, on average, or 12 a year, which is high. Majority of those crashes are angled crashes. I think that can be attributed to, one, the lack of turn lanes, and you have a lack of, and you have no dedicated left turn signal. Add that to the queuing in the single lane, you have driver frustration, and you have some vehicles performing a bypass maneuver around a car that stopped giving a courtesy gap to someone trying to turn left. Aside from that, I think it's just signal visibility. Next time you go through the intersection, you might notice that there's no overhead boom, there's no overhead lights at this intersection. It's the only one like it in town, which is concerning considering how heavily used and relied upon it is. All we have are these pedestrian-level lights, so that's definitely something we'll want to address sooner than later. Other concerns, there's certain aspects of the intersection are not ADA compliant. You see this photo here, two utility poles put really close together. It just makes it impossible for a wheelchair, someone in a wheelchair, to get by. There's also just sidewalks missing west of the intersection on Lowell Street, so we only have crosswalks on two legs of the intersection rather than all four. Another concern is this wide-open driveway apron. This is the apron that's strip mall on the southeast westerly quadrant of the intersection. It's like a barber shop and maybe a gift shop, like a floral arrangement shop. You have head-in parking spaces, and you have this wide-open driveway apron makes for, say at least, an undesirable condition. You have vehicles backing out into oncoming traffic. It's not all bad. There's some good things that are working in our favor at this intersection. For starters, right-away availability. We think we can implement this entire improvement project without any takings, land takings. Back in, I want to say, two years ago, there was an application in front of the board to develop this, planning board, to develop this parcel, and the project proponent had agreed to provide a 15-foot-wide reserve strip in easement to implement grading changes. There's like a grading drop-off there and a sidewalk. The project never, it didn't move forward. I think the permits expired, but there is a new, as I mentioned before, there's a new proponent in front of the planning board who at least indicated to us that they would be willing to honor that reserve strip. Another benefit, I would say, is no impact to wetland resource areas as part of this project. Big not only for the development, for the environment, but big for permitting too, and I think will score higher points in our application process for state and federal That said, I will hand the mic over here to Elizabeth to talk about how we plan to address some of these concerns. Thanks.
As Paul said, the primary concern and primary goal of improving this intersection is safety. There's a high-crash location, 61 crashes in the past five years, 12 per year. It's higher than the state average. So, most of the crashes are angled or rear-end crashes, which are highly able to be reduced by just an improvement to the traffic signal itself. An addition of turn lanes, specific phasing and timing changes can greatly reduce the number of crashes at the intersection. When you control, a second goal is to control the visibility of the signal. As you saw in that, this, when you look at this intersection, this picture of this intersection, you could hardly even see the traffic signal. It's very hard to see. So, adding overhead mast arms and modern signal equipment will, again, greatly improve the visibility of the signal. Also, what you would like to do whenever you upgrade a traffic signal is reduce the delays and the queuing that are experienced by vehicles. So, at this, right now, extensive queues, extensive delays, what it causes is driver frustration, and it causes drivers to maybe accept gaps in traffic that they wouldn't normally accept to perform a turning movement, or they try and bypass turning vehicles in a lane that's not quite designated for that purpose. So, we want to reduce the vehicular delays to continue to improve the operation of the intersection and reduce the driver frustration. We want to upgrade the multimodal features. While there's not a significant number of pedestrians at this intersection currently, with the redevelopment of the southwest corner with a mixed-use type of development that could include residential use, you're going to have more pedestrians that want to go across the street to the supermarket, to the restaurants, to the various shops. So, it's important to address those while we're doing the intersection improvements, improve crosswalks, the ADA compliance, the sidewalks, to address the bicycle accommodations, which is a requirement for Mast dot. And we want to evaluate opportunities to improve the access to the various commercial properties on each corner, make sure that they are appropriate. This, this car right here has just, when I took this picture, they had just reversed out of those perpendicular parking spaces right into that through lane on Lowell Street. They just backed right in, and then they were going to continue on. So, that's not something that's expected by drivers traveling along an arterial roadway. You want to really make sure that drivers know what to expect. So, we're going to work with the business owners to consolidate driveways to one conflict point rather than having a broad parking area. So, to date, we have completed the field survey and the property research. There is an extensive amount of right-of-way, particularly along Woburn Street, so we will be able to do the improvements likely within the existing right-of-way. We conducted a road safety audit with members from the town, Boston MPO, Mast dot, police, fire, and we identified the safety concerns at the intersection, and that is directly where our goals came And that is directly where our goals came from, was trying to address all the items that came up in the road safety audit. We've performed, we have a conceptual layout, which I'll show you on the next slide, that to the best of our ability addresses all the goals outlined. We have submitted a project notification form and a project initiation form to Mast Dot. That's the first step in getting state funding and federal funding. We have submitted documentation to the Boston MPO for scoring to be on the transportation improvement plan. So the improvements proposed include new overhead traffic signals, that's again to address the visibility of the signal, modern equipment, video detection. It will include advanced left-turn phases for both the eastbound and westbound approaches and the northbound and southbound Woburn Street approaches. Exclusive left-turn lanes on all four approaches. This really helps in reducing crashes, because it gets everybody where they're supposed to be. It gets the left turns out of the through traffic, puts them where they're supposed to be, and then the through people, the through-moving vehicles know that they can go around the left-turn vehicles safely, and that's something that they're allowed to do. Adding new bicycle lanes, ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps, improving the access. We're also adding a right-turn lane on the eastbound approach of Lowell Street to address that traffic volume on that movement. And, like I said, new crosswalks, pedestrian signal heads, push buttons to make each approach to the intersection ADA and pedestrian-friendly. So as far as the design, the next steps are to go into what's called 25% design, and that's where we really review the impacts related to the widening, any drainage that we would need to review, make sure that our traffic control is exactly the way we want it, the phasing, the timing. We need to coordinate with the utility companies, there's a lot of overhead wires at that intersection, so in order to make sure the mast arms don't conflict with that, we need to work with the utility companies. We need to continue coordinating with the property owners, make sure everybody has a satisfactory resolution to the access points. And then, as Paul said, we're looking to submit the 25% design in early 2019.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, funding. This is usually not the favorite topic, but I think we have some good news in this, on this category. The design of the project is expected to cost about $200,000, and that will be fully funded with traffic mitigation funds that were secured by the planning board through the permitting process. We received $500,000 from the FedEx project on Industrial Way. Analog will be contributing $100,000 prior to their first occupancy permit. And then, you know, additional development that's proposed and planned in the area may contribute to that, depending on that specific project's impacts to the intersection. So we can fully fund the design with traffic mitigation funds that we've gotten from the planning board process. Construction is expected to cost about $3.4 million, that's our estimate for now. And as mentioned before, that construction funding is expected to be through the state's Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP. We've submitted the project information to the Boston MPO so that they can score it over the next couple of months for programming on the TIP, which would be the 2020 to 2024 TIP. We are going to look into another option for funding, it's called Mast Works. It's a grant program through the state's Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. It's a competitive grant program that focuses on contributing funds towards infrastructure that supports job growth and housing production. So we're going to look into that. It may be a little bit faster than the TIP, but we're going to explore all options and see what happens first. So that's the funding, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Start down, Mr. Louden.
First of all, I want to thank whoever thought of putting this and being proactive on this intersection. It's one of the worst in town, if you've ever been over there. And it's one of the areas that's getting developed tremendously. You had mentioned a project in front of you right now, that I was at your first meeting on it, with the mixed-use, which is going to add 57 apartments to us, to our inventory. But, did we get any mitigation from that, will we get any mitigation from that project? Because that's one of the ones that's going to affect the intersection, I would think, in the utmost. You mentioned some others, but...
Yeah, so we've asked for a traffic study, and that'll be really important to see what that specific project, how it impacts the intersection. I would imagine there would be some impacts to it, so we'll review that really carefully and look at that carefully. As part of those traffic studies, often there are recommendations for mitigation. Because we're doing this, this design, we also think it's probably a good idea to have it peer-reviewed, probably by our engineers, so that we make sure that it's all coordinated.
And speaking of that particular project, are there going to be sidewalks on Lowell and Woburn Street as part of that project?
The improvement project includes sidewalks on all four corners, closing that gap to the west of the intersection, where the sidewalks kind of stop on Lowell Street.
My question is, would that development pay for that, reducing our cost of $3.4 million?
Well, that's a little tricky, just because we wouldn't want them to, until our design is really finalized, we wouldn't want them to put sidewalks in the wrong, physically the wrong spot. So, probably better to coordinate with them for future sidewalks and have them be a part of this process.
A couple other questions. The wallpole fence site is rumored to be coming in front of the town here pretty soon, probably within the next year. Was that put into thoughts when this, this whole process started? And will we have sidewalks from that property down to, on that, that side of the street as part of this project?
About 500 feet, I'd say.
We're closing the gap, too.
Yeah, I don't know if they, as part of this project, they extend all the way to that property, but it certainly would be if, I haven't seen an application yet.
No, neither have I, just, they put the sewer in, so we've got to assume that they're going to do something there.
Then that's certainly going to be a comment that, to provide pedestrian connectivity, given the nature of what we expect it to be.
And then my last comment was, in the information that I have in front of me, this might not happen for another five years, is that, that's another 70 accidents. It's pretty unacceptable. There's got to be a better, there's got to be a better way to get this F-rating down at a much quicker pace. And that's discouraging, when I read that today, that it actually might not shovel to ground for five years.
Agree.
Yeah, I know.
So, well, and I think, so with the Transportation Improvement Project, Program, they always put you on the latest possible spot, right? So the new, the new scoring round, they'll put new projects on the 2024 list.
Right.
But as time goes on, those projects that are ahead of you need to be meeting certain milestones to keep up with where they are on that plan. With this project, we have all the design money that we need, so we can go to full design, probably quicker than some other projects that are needing funds or need right-of-way, which we are also hopefully not going to need. So it's possible that we can get to a full design quickly, and if a project comes, falls off of, you know, 20, an earlier year, we may be able to take that spot because we're ready to go. And that does happen. So, the hope is, the other part is that the Mast Works grant would be a much quicker way, and that's why we want to explore that as well.
Well, I, again, I appreciate you guys bringing this in front of us, because it is, it is an awful, awful intersection, and the quicker we can get it done, it's better. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Regu, just to clarify a point that Mr. Looney made, and last comment that you made, Ms. Gingrich. Ms. Looney, you've made a comment about improving the scoring of this application, and am I correct to interpret your comment, Ms. Gingrich, to mean that this board endorsing it at this point would improve the likelihood of accelerating the timeframe before we can get this project started?
Yeah, they look, so there's two different things going on. There's the Mast Dot design process, and then there's the MPO scoring for funding process. They're linked together, they talk to each other, but Mast Dot really wants you to have a meeting like this, to know that the town's serious about this project. So that helps us get further into this, the design, and it also helps the MPO know that they could put us on the TIP because we're serious. So, it, it's not a, something that you have to complete, but it helps us get further along, and, I don't know if there's anything to add to that.
I think, I think this board is pretty serious about improving that intersection. There's 30 cars that go through that intersection, and one of them are happy about it, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's similar to what we did for Bud's Row. We took a vote on that.
Correct.
To move that forward as well. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you're looking for a vote at the end of this segment, and, you know, I'll let you know right off the bat, I do support the project, absolutely. I've lived on Lowell Street, and I've owned a business on Lowell Street, and it's perhaps the, not one of the, worst intersections in the community. And to hear, I remember years ago, there was a traffic study, and when I was looking to open my business, like about 15,000 cars a day. Now you're talking 30,000 cars a day, so it's considerably, has doubled over the past 30 years, I would assume, and I don't have those figures in front of me, and I absolutely support that. And not only, if you look at that area, down the street, you've got I-93 off Lowell Street. Well, if you go down Woburn Street, because everybody knows the shortcuts, and you bang a right on Conca, 93 is there as well, so that's probably one of the reasons why it's so heavily traveled. And, you know, and I get that. And I know this will be discussed for another time, like Mr. Louden mentioned, it's like, what, 50, 57 units being built there, I believe, what condominiums. Well, let me just say, that's going to be, I know it's a subject for another time, but that's going to be a domino effect. I see, that's the beginning, going all the way down Lowell Street, and we've got to keep our eyes on that. And I just, and I support the project, it's kind of, you know, sad to hear that it's going to take five years for this thing to happen, because what's, I find it ironic, because I travel the town every day, and I see they're putting a huge gas line. It was a huge line, they put the sewer. So obviously, there was plans there to do something, I would imagine. So, and I'm looking at, and I'll be honest, I'd rather see the two restaurants in Doggy World there, as opposed to 50 units. But I know that's a subject for another time. But can you just tell me, you said 500K is what, FedEx is kicking in, $500,000, where are they, you're using some of those funds relative to this beginning of the study, why would they be paying X amount of money? Where are they, I know they're located, you know, right, you know, right by the Conca Street area, is that...
They have a location on Industrial Way. That was permitted probably in 2016, and they contribute, we already have those monies, that was a contribution, I think it was upon occupancy. They agreed, they actually came up with that amount and agreed to contribute that towards traffic improvements, because it was important to them.
Yeah, and I just want to piggyback what Selok and Louden said about, obviously you've got the 57 or whatever condominiums going there, and I just find it ironic that right now, they're not looking to contribute anything to this, but I assume that's going to be a huge moneymaker, if and when that thing passes, and so I would hope to think that they would contribute something to this, because it's a horrible intersection, it really is, and, you know, the taxpayers pay enough money trying to get that road improved. We're always out there patching the road, doing what we can. We ripped up that road, it was horrible. It is a lot better than it was, and I know I pushed for it, and a lot of people here, a lot of good folks up here push for that, so that's something that we really need to take a look at. And I do support the project. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ben, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the presentation and for your efforts here, and like all of my colleagues and others at home, I'm pleased to see that you have sought out some federal and state funding for this project. I look forward to reaching out to our delegation, state delegation, part of which being new in the new session come January, to encourage them to help us out any way we can get with the Mast Works funding that Ms. Gingrich mentioned, so hopefully that will come into play here as well, to help us out and assist us. I think this is obviously a much-needed project, and I will support it myself. Something that hasn't been mentioned up here is that we are still uncertain of the future of the Textron property, which is also close by, and we have, they've made indications that they'll probably be around for a year, a year and a half, but it might coincide nicely with perhaps a new company coming there, which would add more traffic, and so certainly that will help with that. You know, if a new company like Analog was to move in, bringing a lot of employees, that would also add traffic, so we're, hopefully this project will help alleviate some of that when the time does come for that. So, thank you very much for this, and I look forward to supporting it.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in full support of this project as well. Just a couple of questions, just to go back to the sidewalks, and I don't know if you know the answer. We don't, are they going to go on both sides of 129?
The plan is to have them on both sides.
Both sides, but we just don't know how far down.
They will go to the, the project limits. The project limit extends, it's probably 800 feet to the east and west along Lowell Street because of the left-turn lane with taper and that construction. So, it, we are planning to meet the existing sidewalks that are to the west, that stop about 600 feet to the west of the intersection, so that network gap will be closed.
Probably in this vicinity here, Textron's like that skewed entrance they have, that they no longer use. I think that's like here.
Right.
And how about the sidewalks on Woburn Street? How are they going to flow? They gonna, how far down will they go?
They will also go to the project limits, which is maybe 400, 500 feet down. It's past the entrance to the supermarket.
Yeah, right.
Okay. When you say 400, 500 feet, I'd rather use landmarks to...
It'll be along that whole property frontage, almost, not quite to where that, the old driveway is, to the back of that development, Textron. And then it'll go to the east, as much as we can, it might wind up only on the north side, depending on what we work out with the developer on the southeast corner of the intersection. But the plan is to put sidewalks everywhere.
Yeah, that's great. And the turns, the right-hand turns, that are going to be segregated, I guess, you have your left hands, then you have the right hands. How far down are those right-hand turns going to go? Because I know when I drive Woburn Street, I, and I'm stopped at the, near the bank entrance there, and we have the building on the other side, I'm always saying, jeez, I wish I could turn right. But, you know, how far, so how far down are those going to go to provide a person to get in that right lane and turn on all four sides, you know? Because if it's only two or three cars, you say to yourself, jeez, that's really not helping the, the cause, but if it goes a good ways...
Well, there's only a right-turn lane dedicated on the eastbound approach, because that's a very heavy movement, especially in the morning.
Show me with the, when you're saying eastbound.
Heading towards 93.
I got it right here.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah. There's left-turn lanes provided, proposed on all four approaches, but, so that will help by getting the left turns out of the through movement, so the throughs and the right turns will be able to flow more efficiently.
Okay, so you have just a right hand on the, on that side where Paul has it?
Correct.
And there's a right turn on the other, on Woburn Street as well, right?
It's a right and straight.
Right and straight, okay.
And it's a dedicated left.
All right.
And the same, same.
There's a right and straight there, Paul?
Yeah.
And how about on the other side, a right and straight?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, so those are going to be, how far down? Because it looks like you're widening out the, the road, right, or not?
Correct. We're widening out the road to put in the left-turn lanes and the bicycle lanes, so the left-turn lanes are a few hundred feet long. In order to accommodate the queues that we anticipate, get all those left turns into the storage lane, so they don't block the throughs and rights. So, the right turns won't have a dedicated lane, but that whole movement will be processed more efficiently.
Should bet we couldn't get a right-hand designated lane for Woburn Street on both sides, because I just see a ton of traffic coming off of the side where Analog Devices are... is. And, you know, if you're doing just straight and right, and you didn't have the left straight and right, would be much better, I think, on both sides of Woburn Street. You just, the traffic would, would move quicker. Especially, because they're coming down, as Mr. McCoy said, that, then they're heading off to 93 from, from that side. You know what side I'm talking about, on the Lucci's side down below? Yeah, right over there. So, I, you know, just a thought. But the other thing that concerns me too, and it also concerned me over near 129 and Glen Road, is the bicycle path. Over here, like they do over there, the bicycle path seems to be in between two lanes, rather than at the, on the side of the sidewalk. So it's kind of scary, probably for, I'm not a bicy, I'm not a bicyclist, so I don't know. But to ride in the middle of two lanes might be a little challenging. Is there a reason why we can't put that to the far right-hand side?
Actually, the, the way Mast dot requires you to, to design a, through a bicycle lane like that...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, no, just to touch, you know, how far is that, those, the bicycle lane? Is it going to go all the way down the length of Lowell Street?
It will go to, again, to the project.
No, I'm just saying, I assume you're going to do it. Yeah, Lowell Street side. So is, I'm sorry, because I'm just picking up on something. And if I can, are they going to continue the bicycle lane all the way down the length of Lowell Street?
Well, right now, a little bit past, right in front of Textron, where the, about where the sidewalk ends.
Yes.
It opens up and with wide shoulders that are about six feet wide. So in, in theory, you could connect this project, the bicyclist would use the bicycle lane through this area, and then go into the wide shoulder. And they could go all the way down to 38.
Just to start, you're right where the brick is. It gets a lot narrower. And it's a lot narrower, all the way down to the Shell gas station. My own opinion, I think that's crazy to put some bicycle lanes there. Are we subject to have to do that because we're getting money? And that's so-called, that's what we need to do? Because I think that's foolish to even put the bicycle lanes even at that intersection. It's crazy. Someone's got, you know what's going to happen? We're talking about going to get an accident every month? Someone's going to get killed there a couple of times a year. I hate to say it because of that intersection. Now, we're just opening for people to just ride their bikes right in the middle of two lanes, like the chairman said. It's crazy.
We do have to design to Mast dot's standards, which require providing for all modes of transportation, pedestrians and bicycle, as well as vehicular. Or else, we have to provide a very good justification why we're not providing it.
Maybe what you could justify is we don't want to see anyone get killed. That would be the priority. And I would hope to think you'd do that. And I'm not trying to be negative here. But here, we're trying to help the traffic flow. I think we'll make it a lot worse. Sorry.
No, no, that was one of my concerns. When I saw it, I said, boy, because if they take a, if a bicycle person wants to take a, a right-hand turn, he's taking a right-hand turn right into traffic. So I, good luck. I just, hopefully, there's not that many bicycle riders on that street.
Mr. Chairman, and again, I'm not trying to be smart, but does your future traffic study, does that include bicycles?
Well, we do, we don't project the number of bicycles that may be attracted to this intersection with the addition of bicycle lanes. It's just a requirement by Mast dot to design for all modes.
Yeah, I only ask some of the, to add to some of the points, you know, if the evidence showed that there were no bicycles during the time period, maybe that would, might be evidence to support that we didn't need one. But...
Currently, there are no bicycles on Lowell or Woburn Street that we include in account.
Can't even drive a car through there, no matter what.
The funny thing about it is that on Woburn Street, and on the other side, the bicycle lanes are on the sidewalk side. It's only 129, which is the most busiest, the, where you get the most, the speed and traffic is, is on 129.
The topic came up, I gave the, the planning board sort of a quick preview of, of what we're working on, since they did their hard work in securing some funds. And the, the topic came up that why is that bike lane in the middle of those lanes? And Dave Shedd, who's actually on the board and works for DOT, explained that, you know, that's how, that's how they require it. But also, the reasoning behind it is that if you have cars turning right, you don't want them on the other side of the bike lane that's going, the bikes are going straight across, right? You don't want a car turning into that bike. And that's why, he explained, that's why you want it in between, even though it looks really strange and looks really, I don't know.
Strange?
Strange. But that's, so they don't want the right turns coming into the bikes.
Right. It is a visibility issue. It is a visibility priority to have them in there.
And I know this is probably a drill-down question, and probably not for right now. But signage would be further on down, so people are instructed that this is a left lane only, and the, yeah, that you'll have that stuff.
Well, the appropriate signage would be designed in.
All right, I don't have anything else? Do you have any questions?
I guess the only other, the only question that I would have is, in terms of the design, this is based upon current traffic volumes, correct? So does it provide for any allowance for an expand, you know, an increase in traffic volume? So if this intersection ultimately, you know, hopefully, it'll be constructed in closer to two or three years, in five. But in five years out, if the traffic volume is, you know, 35,000 or 38,000, how will this handle that increased volume?
When we do the functional design report for the, the intersection, which, you know, does all the analysis and the volumes, we actually project out to the year 2029 to make sure that the intersection functions in a future year. And we put on a background growth rate, then whatever, you know, a certain percentage per year to grow that out to 2029. And then the known projects in the area, we also added that traffic into that background.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to... A subject, the Woburn Street Bridge on the Woburn Line. Was that, that's Boston's, over the railroad tracks?
Yeah, I received a update from DOT's project manager. They're, they had a slight snag in funding, but now they're back on track for the 75% design.
So, so when would that project, it doesn't make sense to build that bridge without fixing this intersection. That's what made me, it clicked to me. It just doesn't make sense.
Right.
Talk about volume added. And Mike said, in 30 years, it's doubled. That's, that's going to, in five years, if it's done in five years, it's going to, set at 30,000, it might be 40 or 50,000. And you've got Analog that's adding employees, you've got a mixed use, a couple mixed uses. And lord knows what's going to happen with Textron. And that is a known project. So I hope that was part of your 10-year, 10-year look.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more on that front. We made comments to Mast dot after the 25% design public hearing for the new Boston Street Bridge, that we called this intersection out specifically. My hope is, is that we can leverage that, yeah, and say, well, look at, if this is going to happen, you're funding this, you know?
Right. Kind of like Butters Row and the Route, the Route 38 Bridge that we've talked about in the past.
Correct.
Thank you. I just needed to, that, that to be said, because it's a huge concern. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one more thing.
Yes.
Just to touch upon what the chairman said. Now, DOT, I assume they give out waivers. Now, you say normally, the process is to have the bike routes. And I get that. In the inner cities, there's a lot of bike routes. And that's what they're really focused on. And obviously, out here in the country area, it seems to be expanding that. Because if we're looking for that funding, we have to incorporate those rules and regs. I would assume that DOT does give out waivers, given the circumstances. And I would hope to think the whole reason is safety. Because I think it's totally crazy to have bike lanes at that intersection. I would hope to think that that would be the message. I'm going to support that, with the caveat that you folks send that to the DOT, that we're looking for a waiver of the bike route in that area. Because I just think it's crazy to have that bike route there. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me ask the question that, what, what is the process for DOT waiver on something like this? Is that, are there, under what circumstances would DOT issue a waiver on, on a design element like this?
We'd have to come up with an alternate. We might be able to provide wider shoulders and not, instead of a bike lane, and have it that way. We would, we'd have to do a design exception report. And if they don't accept it, then, you know, then we'd have to go back to the drawing board. So, so it's...
So if there's wider shoulders, does that then create the prospect of takings?
We would have to review that when we go through the design process, to see what shoulders we could put in. Or, but the, the bike lanes are the primary requirement.
And I, I do understand the reason, although you, you said that you don't want a car to turn in. It makes sense that it would be crazy, but it makes sense that it would be where it is. But, okay. Any other questions? All right. I'm going to take a motion to accept, or to support the project, so that we can get it moving within the next five years. If that's what you, that's what you want to do?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project. But I would like you to pursue the possibility, and would hope, of a waiver of those bike lanes. And you, you people are professionals, I'm not. Obviously, it's a safety issue. I think someone, I think you're going to have a fatality out there with somebody on a bicycle. I truly believe that. And because, and I would hope to think that, that you would consider that. So I'd like to make that as a motion with that understanding. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion to support the project with the understanding that they would, that they would look into...
DOT, you would look to, you would look to see if there's a waiver relative to the bike lanes in that proximity area. Thank you.
And if there's not, there's still the support of the project, because they're going to look into that. My understanding...
Is that kind of making it a little bit easier for DOT, so I'm sorry. And then, all right, then, okay. I mean, can't we just go ahead with that? And then we'll revisit that at another time? If they say no, then we'll look at it again. Why, why, why would we want to do that, say, if it's a waiver, if they say no, we're not going to do it? Then, all right, then here's plan B. Go ahead. Why can't we just say, this is what we want?
Question becomes how, you know, we, we would give up the funding, as I understand it, correct? I mean, if we basically say, we're not, this is not acceptable to the town, and DOT does not grant a waiver, then I, then we can go forward potentially, if we're prepared to spend the money on the construction?
Correct.
Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Mr. Ben.
And we're...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Where we don't have a physical limitation, as far as, you know, we have, we have certain amounts of right-of-way to fit in a bike lane. I think it might be a hard argument to say that we, we can't put one. But we can certainly look at the possibility of not having one. It's probably going to be a hard sell, though. That's what, when we talked about it briefly at the planning board, it, that also came up, especially with where, how it's kind of awkward there, even though it makes sense. Are there a lot of bicycles? Not currently, but there could be some bicycles in the future. And it is a standard requirement for Mast dot. So we can look into it, but it might be a hard sell.
Yeah, for, for me, the explanation made sense. So that's why I don't necessarily agree that we need to go forward with a waiver. I just, you know, I posed the question because when I first looked at it, it was concerning. But after you explained it, makes sense. And I think we should just go with the support of the project. But if you want to throw that caveat in there, that I don't have a problem with that. Mr. Ben.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I could just ask a question. I think if we all share the same concern that we want this project to take off in, in a timely fashion, and I know you mentioned that you, you believe that perhaps there's an opportunity for us to maybe get ahead of schedule, given the fact that we have everything in order, we have the funding. I just, my only concern would be, would a waiver set us back in that timeline? And maybe perhaps delay the project? You know, if we're looking for a waiver, and we have to go back to DOT and say, with this exception, does that, again, so I guess I asked the question, does that potentially delay us even further?
It does. It makes it, it makes the process a lot more difficult if you have to go against their design rules and make that justification. It does, it could possibly make the process a little bit longer of approving the project. And if you wanted to apply for Mast Works, you would definitely want to have every mode of transportation accommodated. Because the more residential development that could come in at the Textron site, the, the train station is not that far away. Having a bicycle facility that connects all this, you know, potential development to the downtown, or to the Route 38 corner, the commercial corridor, and the train station, is really a, a very positive thing for a Mast Works application.
I guess, I understand what you're saying. But I don't want to disrupt the life of what, who lives here now, to accommodate future people who are going to move to the community. That bothers me. But I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we do this? Because there wasn't a second to the motion, why don't we split the motions? Why don't we split it up? So that way, there, we show a unified front of supporting the project, so we can move forward. And then we take another separate motion to see if you can follow up with the idea of, if there's possibilities of a waiver. This way here, we're going to, because from what I gathered from everybody, we're in support of the project. So why don't we take that first, and let's support the project? Then let's take a second motion and look into the possibility of a waiver of that bike lane, or some sort of a help in that design. That way, there, we can move it forward. And how's that sound? All right. So I didn't hear a second to the motion, so I'm looking for another motion.
I'll make a motion that we support the, the project as described tonight. Second.
Okay. So there is a motion made in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of supporting the project? Okay, that's unanimous. All right. So now I'll be looking for a motion if you, so choose to have the project individuals checked to see if there's some sort of a waiver that DOT permits for bicycle lanes.
I'd make that motion. And I would hope to think that you kind of lobby our legislative delegation in helping with this. Because, believe me, I'd be willing to bet that waivers are out there, I'd be willing to bet they could give a waiver under certain circumstances. And that's why I do support the project. But I'd really love to see that happen. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, the second of discussion.
Just a point of clarification. Is the motion to just explore the possibility of a waiver? Or is it a, don't move forward unless we have it?
I would love to just do the waiver. But...
I take it as exploring the possibility of a waiver.
Could I just add to that, that perhaps that they report back to us with the findings of what, before we make any more, take any more action, right? So if they come back and say, you can get a waiver, but XYZ, explain that to the board. You can't get a waiver, but XYZ, maybe we just get some more information in a future meeting, before we take any more action.
Yeah, I'd support that. I'd hate for people to be waiting in traffic at the intersection as is for two more years, because it's waiting on some guy's desk to process necessarily.
So just to, just to be clear then, so in, in terms of the next steps for you, it sounds like, at this point, the, the board's support is perhaps somewhat conditional upon at least investigating the option of this waiver of the bike lane. So it, it sounds like that is really the first step that needs to happen. And the, the work with providing the indication that the board is supporting this project will need to wait until this other issue of a waiver is fully vetted.
That's not, no, that's not the way I, I view it. I, I think you move forward with it, that you have full support of the board, and we're going full steam ahead. And then you're looking to see if there's a possibility of a waiver for the bike lane, period. If it is, it is. If it isn't, it isn't. You can take it back here. But as far as I'm concerned, we're in support of this, this intersection change.
And what the process would be for a waiver? Because I'm not, I've never applied for a waiver to Mast DOT, so I don't, I don't know. You know, and it, does that include a delay in the project? Does it, does it require something else?
I mean, I split, I split it up on purpose, so that we wouldn't stop, you know, the operation.
And if I could, you mentioned that perhaps a change in the plan could require land-taking. Now, that changes things for me, too. So I would be curious to get more information before we took any other action.
Right. So the motion is to support it, I get that. How about we put in a motion that could you explore the opportunity to seek if we can get a waiver relative to the that could you explore the opportunity to seek if we can get a waiver relative to the bike lane?
And that's what we have on the floor right now. So that's what we're looking for a vote on that right now.
Try to push that.
Okay, all those in favor of, of looking for the waiver, I'm not unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for bringing this in front of us. It's a lousy intersection.
Thanks for hearing us. Uh, yes, the first item under communications is a memo to the board with regard to the MBTA commuter station. Uh, I know a few of you had contacted me about the status of that. Um, we had received some recent, uh, information about the train still parked or stopped across Route 62. Uh, so the questions were raised about, uh, the meeting that was held and the, uh, the, uh, action that came out of that meeting. Uh, the meeting was in July, July 18th of this past year. We had representatives from the town, uh, as well as Keolos and the MBTA at the, at the meeting. Uh, it was noted that the, uh, traffic, the outbound traffic, uh, coming, heading from Boston out to Haverhill, um, they typically would not need to, uh, stop at the 62, um, at Route 62 unless, uh, they are carrying passengers, handicapped passengers, uh, that need to disembark there. There's only one location that would accommodate them and in that circumstance, the train would be across 62. The only way to cure that problem is to create a new, uh, station. Uh, and the suggestion during those discussions was that it would need to go, be located further up the rail. I think there was also some question about, uh, ownership of land. They may not have, uh, enough land to do that. Um, on the southbound side, uh, there is no, um, platform for folks to disembark or get onto the train. So that is why all the southbound, uh, traffic, the trains are stopping, uh, on Route 62. Uh, in terms of, uh, uh, funding, it's not clear what the cost would be to construct, uh, platforms on the north and southbound lanes. Uh, I have contacted Senator Tar's office, uh, spoken with one of his aides and they're, um, have that question out to MBTA. So I'm looking for further information on that. Uh, in the meantime, you'll recall that, uh, Senator Tar was able to get, uh, a million dollar, uh, a million dollars included in an economic development bond bill, uh, towards the cost of improvements at that station. Uh, the process there is ultimately the governor puts together a five-year, uh, capital plan and there are a number of different projects that are in this bond bill and he will select, uh, some, but presumably not all of those projects. So the key, the next key, uh, is to make sure that that one million dollars gets onto that, uh, capital plan. Uh, I'm confirming, uh, now with his office as to what the timeline is for letters of support.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say something real quick?
Of course.
Jeff, um, you know, I know I brought the city attention to the manager and I'm glad to see other members, uh, obviously showed a big concern as it, as well. I mean, obviously I saw this on the Wilmington Community Page and I did address it to the town manager. Do you think we could put this on the town web so people could see it? And I gotta say, the town manager did a lot of research and good work on this, but there's still some unanswered questions down the future, obviously relative to, everything comes down to funding. And, uh, it's just sad when you approach, uh, when you see your citizens out there and they put it on the, uh, community page that the train is covering 62. And not for nothing, I'm so happy things worked out. Now for nothing, man, you live on the other side of the damn tracks. All right, you see, I bet you thought about that, too.
This is the reason why, this is, um-
Yeah.
A, a subject that I'm very passionate with and that's why I attended that July meeting. I personally, uh, out and about in town, took a couple pitches and sent them to Chief Begonis, one of the tracks. This was in June and July. And it's part of the reason why we discussed it back then and it was, and you're right, Jeff, has been very much in the forefront. And yeah, I recently saw it on, on the, on the social media. Um, but it definitely has got the attention of this board, um, and everyone on this board about that. Um, yeah, and, and, and believe me, I, I thought about it, um, on my personal matters, so yes.
It's, it's had the attention of this board for, for quite some time.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and the residents of Wilmington should realize that. And I know that it's been on social media, but it, the gentleman sitting at this front table here have been on top of this from the get-go, so, and people need to know that. Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more. I also wanna compliment the manager. He has been very, uh, he's been, he's been on all, all over this, as many of the members. I don't think, uh, we'd go a couple months without getting a text message of a picture from somebody saying, "You can't believe what's going on at the intersection at this moment," or "People see stuff online." And I appreciate people sending that stuff in because we forward that to the manager and I look forward to, uh, the next meeting we can sit down with these folks because, you know, this certainly needs to be resolved. Um, I was there in July with Ed and, you know, I, I just think that there's gotta be a way, uh, the example that I used back in July, and I'm not an expert in rail, certainly, uh, but the, the example that I proposed to Keolis was that, as someone who drives a vehicle every day, I approached the 62 bridge, for example. And as I approached a 62 bridge, I obviously have my red, yellow, green lights. But atop, I also have a flashing light. And as I approach that bridge and I see that flashing light, that lets me know that there's an emergency vehicle that's about to come through and I need to move to the side or move so that can be safe, so that the, uh, emergency vehicles can get through. So I proposed to, uh, Keolis at the time was that, well, why can't there be a similar signal to the train? You know, the police and fire department signals that traffic signal at the intersection. Why couldn't they signal a, a light or some type of siren or whatever it might be, so that the train conductor knows that I need to continue forward or come to a, a stoppage if I can, if it's safe, because there's an emergency vehicle coming? The same way that I am signaled by the flashing light. Now, and they came back with, it takes two miles to stop the train and that's understandable, uh, it's, it's a large vehicle. But what if they were just simply to pull through and continue forward so that there wouldn't be a two, three, four-minute stoppage? Uh, now I know that comes with some kind of challenges. Again, I'm not an expert in rail, but there's gotta be a way. There's gotta be a way to signal that train, that we have emergency vehicles coming through and, and they ought to, uh, adapt to that. And so, um, I look forward to an additional meeting, uh, with these folks where we can continue to have this conversation 'cause it's really, it's gonna be the matter of life and death and it was back in June, so I would hate to see it ever happen again.
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. The regular writer of the MBTA, I, I think the town has a very united front of wanting to resolve this problem. I think the fact that a meeting had to be happened, or had to happen, to even discuss it rather than just solving it with a phone call, just pull a little bit further through is just, uh, an illustration of some of the, the, uh, organizational problems that face the MBTA. They don't have a, a permanent director right now. They had a, a commuter rail that had a standing derailment just two weeks ago and the same day an engine caught fire. Um, I think unfortunately, the North Wilmington subst, uh, the North Wilmington Station is not on their priority list. Um, I think for everybody that lives in town, they don't want this to be a problem. They want this to be solved. And this, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. McCoy, you said this isn't, has been a problem for a long time with trains blocking, uh, that street. And I'd like to see this get, get escalated. I'd like to see something happen where, you know, maybe we can kinda just bombard the MBTA with letters or do something where, because everybody in town wants this problem solved. It's just the MBTA not being able to do anything, uh, organizationally to fix it. Uh, again, I, I ride the commuter rail every day and maybe some of the conductors will give me dirty looks tomorrow morning, but it, this very well could be, uh, th, this is a problem that certainly happened in June. It could've happened with Ed a couple weeks ago. It's certainly capable of repetition. We know it's going to keep happening because we have our legislators making an issue out of this. We have our town manager making an issue out of this. We have selectmen showing up to meetings. We have a police chief and a fire chief showing up and making the, this, being very vocal about how much of a problem this is. And the MBTA hasn't done anything. I, I really think, we, we need to be creative about how to escalate this so the MBTA actually does something and the governor's office actually does something to help us out here. We've gone as far as we can go because this is rail. We can't really do much. Our hands are a little bit tied. We're a municipality and they, they just have more authority than we do. But the squeaky wheel gets to grease and I really think that we, as a community, really should be rallying around this to try and, and accelerate this process.
To Mr. Eaton's point, I couldn't agree with him more. Uh, you know, I would like to see us extend an invitation to the folks, uh, Keolis, MB, MBTA to come before this board in public on TV. You know, this was a, a very informative meeting that we had back in July, but I'd like to see if they would be willing to come here and, in front of the citizens and then explain some of the things that they explained to us. Now, I doubt that they would accept the invitation, but, uh, perhaps they would. And one final thing that Mr. Eaton just reminded me of at that meeting, uh, to your very point, Mr. Eaton, this is not a priority for them because they mentioned publicly that they've considered closing that station because it's one of their least used in the state. So this is not priority for them, which is very discouraging.
And that's a, uh, good idea, a good, yeah, a good point. Mr. Bendel, why don't we invite them to a meeting, um, Mr. Manager, and have them come and, and address the residents of Wilmington about this issue. And kudos to, to Senator Tar and staying on top of him and, and trying to champion this million-dollar project through. And maybe we can get ahold of, uh, Representative Robertson to jump on board with this, to get our, and Representative Gordon, uh, to jump on board with this, uh, because the more we get our legislative, uh, support, the better we are on this.
One of the gentlemen on this list is a Wilmington resident. If you remember, at that July meeting, he lived not far from the police station, so hopefully they'll attend the meeting.
Okay. Uh, next is a, uh, status on the Butters Row Bridge Project. Uh, Green International's been hired by Mast dot, uh, to do the design work for this. Initially, there were some delays, apparently their ability to get access. They, some of the survey work involved work around the rail and because there were, apparently it was a flagman shortage, uh, they were not able to, uh, progress as quickly as possible. Ultimately, that's been resolved. They've done the initial survey work. Um, next steps for them are to per, uh, perform some conceptual and preliminary design work and obtain approval, uh, of that work from various divisions within Mast dot. Uh, there's an expectation that there'll be a hearing before the Board of Selectmen, uh, in 2019. I suspect the later part of the year. Uh, and then the project is slated to be advertised for 2020, uh, subject to how things proceed. Next is a memo to the board, uh, with respect to the survey, survey that was done, uh, through Survey Monkey. You'll recall, uh, there was some discussion about the prospect of changing, uh, the annual town meeting, uh, date from a, a Saturday to perhaps a, a week night, a weekday night. So, uh, with the help of our IT, uh, Director, um, John O'Neil and Valerie Gingrich, they put together the survey that was put out, ran a little over a month. Uh, the results came back, um, essentially, um, just some of the points that I picked up on. Um, one of the real common threads that seemed to run, uh, amongst those that participated, and there were 479 respondents, was a, just a general frustration with the length of the meeting. Uh, the other piece that seemed to be, uh, of concern amongst residents is the random selection process. I think people expressed in their, uh, commentary the desire to be able to go for a particular topic and have some expectation as to when that topic would be heard. Uh, and, and of course, at this, based upon the current random selection process, that isn't always the case. Uh, in terms of the direct question as to whether people would prefer or would attend a Saturday meeting, it was really just about 50/50. Uh, then when the question was asked about, uh, likely attendance, uh, at a meeting that would occur multiple nights during a given week, 56% were in favor of that type of, uh, arrangement. Uh, the percentage went up to about 69.3 when the question was asked as to whether people would prefer a night meeting over successive weeks. Tuesdays seemed to be, uh, the most, um, popular night, if you will, at 70.19%. Wednesday, 66.4. Then when the question was asked about, uh, the cha, a potential change in the, uh, actual time, uh, the preference in this was interesting, whether it was a week, uh, whether it was a Saturday or a week night. Uh, the preference seemed to be the fourth, uh, week in April, or the first week in March. I would just note, with respect to the first week in March, I have some particular concerns about that because, uh, the, the whole budget process is really dictated by when town meeting happens. The Town Managers Act requires that I present a budget, uh, to the Board of Selectmen 90 days, uh, before, uh, the town meeting. So to the extent that the meeting was, if it were to be backed up into early March, uh, I would be beginning the process of the budget in, uh, September, early October. Uh, the intent of this was simply provide, to provide information, uh, to the board. Certainly 479 respondents is not a statistically significant, uh, number, given the number of registered voters we have, but it does provide some measure of, uh, indicators, if you will, about, uh, people's preferences. Uh, the next, uh, letter is, um, it's actually a memo from Koish Akora, the principal at Green International. Uh, and it, um, on a positive note, uh, indicates that the, uh, Yentile Farm recreational, recreation area was, uh, nominated and ultimately received the Silver Award in 2019 Engineering Excellence. Uh, it was a competition that, uh, Green, uh, after requesting permission to enter our park, in this competition, uh, was awarded the silver. Uh, it recognizes projects that demonstrate a high degree of achievement, uh, value and integrity. I think it's also noteworthy that apparently past recipients have been, uh, not only, um, from other parts of the country, but other parts of the world. So, uh, that's, uh, in my estimation, uh, demonstrates the, the achievement that we were able to make here. Um, there will be a presentation, uh, at the Royal Sinesta Hotel in Cambridge on March 20th and we'll get more information out as that gets closer. Next is a memo, uh, to the board, uh, with regard to the budget process. It is certainly currently underway. Uh, as you know, the, uh, process for, uh, capital improvement requests, uh, was, uh, established. Um, those letters, uh, no, memos, instructions went out to, uh, department heads back in, uh, October. Uh, budget submissions have already been made. There's approximately $6.6 million worth of projects, uh, on the capital side, including, uh, projects that would be funded through Chapter 90, which is the road construction money. Uh, operating budgets were due on the, uh, third of, uh, the month here. Uh, I'm in the process now of meeting with, uh, departments. Uh, Mike Morris, um, is involved in the process as well, uh, in terms of, he's joining me in the meetings and going through, um, uh, the, each of the budgets. Um, uh, I, I would, uh, note, and I just actually did receive a call just, um, last week, uh, from, uh, the superintendent over at Shawshank Tech and he's indicating to me that, I guess, um, the enrollment numbers from Wilmington are projected to go up, uh, uh, pretty significantly and so we should anticipate a, um, a potential, uh, larger-than-normal increase in assessment. Uh, that, that assessment number is governed by, uh, the number of students, uh, the number of students from Wilmington that attend as well as, um, the number of students from other communities. As would be expected, uh, and he indicated this in our conversation, uh, with the new high school in Billerica opening up, um, the number of attendees, uh, potential attendees is, is expected to be down there. So they're gonna be, uh, opting to go to the Billerica High School as opposed to the Tech. So the distribution, uh, changes and that affects the town. Uh, that's one, certainly one factor, um, I need to be mindful of. The retirement assessment is supposed to be, uh, up fairly significantly this year. Um, so, you know, there's a number of different- So, you know, there's a number of different challenges here we're going to have to work through. Clearly, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the free cash and some measure of frustration, I think, about the level of free cash. But as I've said many times, and I guess I'll take the opportunity to say it again tonight, you know, the last time we had a major economic downturn, the town manager at the time had built up about $9.3, $9.4 million in free cash. When things went south and state aid started to drop off and motor vehicle excise and the various revenues started to fall back, we relied upon that free cash. We, some positions didn't get filled, but we also didn't have layoffs that many communities had. When we weathered that storm, we wound up at the end of that coming out with about $3.6 million in free cash. So, there's no question in my mind, not to be a pessimist, but there will be another downturn because these economies are cyclical. You know, I think we're in a good position to deal with that when the next one occurs. And also, I think we need to be mindful of the various projects that need to be on, on the docket. The facilities plan, whether that ultimately is the plan, has identified $143 million worth of projects that need to be done, whether they're modest upgrades or major building improvements. So, you know, I, I think that it's, it's advisable to continue to have reserves like that. With all that being said, I wanted to bring this up at the meeting tonight to give the board members an opportunity to provide any comments or suggestions, direction to me as I work through the budget. Certainly, if you have thoughts and ideas going forward, please provide them to me as I work through this process with Mike and other members of the staff.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bendel?
Mr. Chairman, if we could, I think we did this last year. We just, I have a few things that I would, I'd just like to mention to the manager here. Thank you for this opportunity to give some thoughts. A couple of the thoughts that came to me when preparing for this was that, number one, if you could continue the funding that we've always had, strong funding for our school system, which I think is vital for this community. Number two, I really think that it's been a benefit to the town over the last couple of years in the addition of the Substance Abuse Coordinator. I think she's done fantastic work and has been a huge asset to the town. I'd like to see some allocations for projects like we've seen in the past couple of years with, we've done roofs and windows at some of the schools. I'd like to see some money allocated for potentially upgrades and improvements at the senior center, perhaps to bring it up, to make sure it's handicap accessible. I know my colleague, Mr. Eaton, has brought that to light in the past meetings. I think that would be crucial. One thing I'd like to take a look at, just because I think it could be a potential problem, is what we're allocating for the trash contract going forward. I think that that could be a problem for us and that we ought to be creative and try to have a, a good vision for what could happen there. I know, maybe this is a good time to mention that, had some conversations with the chair and the manager last week about potentially extending leaf pickup by a week. Because if you're like me and you hadn't had a chance to do your leaves because it's rained every weekend, I think a lot of folks found themselves in that situation. But Russell wanted $6,500 to us to extend it one week. So, I, I didn't think that was very reasonable. But I'd like to say, maybe if we were to go in a new contract with them, that perhaps we saw some language that would allow for, if we had another very rainy fall, a one-week pickup. I think that's a reasonable request. And I was disappointed to see that, for a group of folks that are having a difficult time getting their act together, that they weren't willing to work with the town by one week. But that's, I guess, a conversation for another day. And then, lastly, I'd like to see in the coming budget, and this may be a little controversial, but perhaps overdue, is similar to what goes on in our neighboring town of Barica, where they, on a yearly basis, accept up to six roads per year, I think, don't, to the, to the town. And I think that would go a long way with folks. I understand that we can't accept all the roads and that that brings a financial burden to the taxpayers. But I think it would go a long way if we take a look at adopting a few roads. And I'm not, I just throw out the number six. I think that may be reasonable. I've had conversations with the manager about this in the past, and I, I recognize the challenges that come with it. But I think, like I said, I think it could go a long way. So, we come up with a process of how to apply to have your road approved. We come up with a deadline of when to apply by, and then you, you look at the pool of roads that have been accepted, and you look at the budget we've created for that, and you try to go and take care of some of those roads that are in dire need. I think it would go a long way with folks. So, that would be something I would really like to see if we could explore. And so, I would just urge the manager to continue to be conservative with his budget, as he has been, creative, to seek grants, and to continue to, I was pleased to see last town meeting that a number of items were paid for out of free cash. You know, I know that free cash is something that I've learned a lot about in my two years on the board. And I think it goes a long way for folks when they see items that are perceived to be nickel-and-dimed, you know, small-ticket items that are being paid out of free cash. I think that goes a long way with folks. And I recognize the importance of free cash, the people's savings account, but I'm glad to see that a few items were paid out of free cash, and I'd like to see that continue. So, I thank you for your efforts there. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Just quickly, Mr. Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but the free cash amount that's certified is certified as of July 1st, and that is not net of the expenses that are approved at the prior town meeting for the present fiscal year? That's coming out of free cash, correct?
That, that is, it is certified as of 6/30 of...
So, they, they close at the previous fiscal year?
Yes.
So, roughly two months earlier, a town meeting, we allocate certain expenses to be paid from free cash, and that is not reflective in that figure, correct?
Well, so, it, it, it is. So, you'll recall that the number, and I don't have the free cash number off the top of my head for the prior year, but it was reduced by...
Whatever's been approved.
Whatever was approved. That number has now gone up to 20, to 23 million. So, the 23 million is reflective of the prior year's free cash minus the liabilities against it, the funding for, the money that we put into this various stabilization accounts, the money for the Park Street Bridge, and it's built back up to the 23. If I recall, it was, went from something in the order of 21 down to 16 or 17 million. Now, it's up to 23.
I do agree with Slapman Bendel's idea about the, starting to cyclically phase in the acceptance of roads. I think it's a good idea. And I think that increasing staffing in the fire department, I think, really should be a priority. I think we should be getting out in front of, preparing for a North Wilmington substation. I think it's needed. I think the discussion that we've had here tonight about the, the difficulty of our emergency vehicles getting past the North Wilmington MBTA station, I'm not, I'm not going to bet that the MBTA is going to figure that situation out anytime soon. And I think that there's been a lot of development in North Wilmington over the past 20 years, and I think that those folks, and we have a perfect example of it, and the gentleman to my left would certainly be the immediate beneficiaries of having a North Wilmington fire substation. And I think we should be increasing our staffing levels in preparation to that. Also, I know we've had discussions, or at least the finance committees had discussions, and many of us were present, the overtime figures for the fire department, given their staffing levels as it is right now, is a concern. And I do believe that increasing staffing there would actually help out that overtime figure quite a bit.
Mr. Chairman, I happen to agree with both my colleagues that have spoke on the unaccepted, excuse me, the unaccepted street and the North Wilmington Fire Station has been a, a project that I've talked about for years. When Mike Kyra was the manager, we talked about it. So, it's been talked about. It's enough, it's about time that we do something about it, pretty, pretty quick. Because I agree with Mr. Eaton that the MBTA or the Keolis is going to drag their feet on that North Wilmington fire, train station, possibly close it. But we need a North Wilmington Fire Station. And adding the personnel that the fire chief has talked about at, in front of us at our last meeting and in front of the finance committee, will go a long way to, to have personnel for that firehouse. So, those are some of the, I agree with my colleagues on some of those budget items that need to be looked at hard. Thank you.
I just, I would, I would just like to mention, I understand the importance of free cash and how the S&amp;P looks at that. We need to maintain 10 to 15%. They look at 15%. And also, the stabilization funds, they want to look at 15% in that as well of the budget. You know, 30% sounds like a lot, but when you're looking at future projects, you know, you have the, the town hall, the admin for the school. I mean, we cannot continue with the Roman House. We cannot continue to throw good money into a building that should no longer be there. You know, we, I think we just spent $24,000 to fix the roof.
Right.
So, you know, prioritizing things, a town hall and admin, school admin building is, should be one of the top priorities at this point. You have the senior center. Now, we talked to the substation, even an elementary school to, to take the place of the Wildwood. It'd be nice if we had a brand-new elementary school at the Wildwood. So, that's the importance of free cash and the stabilization funds, so that they can be used for these important projects that are coming down the line. And, and, you know, kudos to you for having that free cash available for us. But what, what I'd like to look at, if possible, is a comparison on the, on the tax, on the tax levy that we, we put out. I know we, we did the maximum shift, and now when we, we look at the tax, we go to the maximum 2.5, I believe. We've done that for a while on the, on the levy limit. We do the base plus the 2.5 increase.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be curious, and then with the new growth that you add in there to come up with the, the tax base, I'd be curious just to see what it would be at, you know, 2% rather than 2.5, to see what the difference is for the taxpayer, to see if there's a significant savings to, to the taxpayer. But with that said, they also have to understand that, how it moves forward to the next year, then we're taking a lower base next year in, into the next tax season, and we may be behind the eight ball in that regard. So, I, I would just like to see a comparison of the two, not that it would happen, but because, you know, moving forward and we see all the new projects with the facilities' master plan that, that are forthcoming, it may not be possible to, to lower that base to 2%. But just to, to see the comparison would be important. So...
Right. Yeah, we, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. I actually, last year, I believe it was, I had the conversation with Karen Rassus about, you know, what would it mean if we reduced, if we did not raise taxes to the levy limit by about $1 million? And the, because, on the, on the one hand, the board has shifted the maximum tax burden to the commercial industrial personal property. So, the consequence of that for any reduction or, or reduction in the increase is that the maximum benefit is going to go to the commercial industrial personal property. So, in that example from a year ago, I think the, the savings to the average taxpayer was something in the order of $85 over the course of a year. So, you know, is it, it's helpful, certainly, I suppose it will be to, to some folks, and certainly we'll take a look at that, that option. The one thing that I've, the one concern that I have about establishing levy capacity, if you will, not taxing to the levy limit, that is considered a reserve. But I'm not, I think it would be very difficult to tap into that reserve at any time in the future. So, in the case of free cash, when we have, whether it's 18 or 20 or $23 million, if there's an emergency that comes up or a project that we need to do with town meeting approval, we can draw upon that money and address it. In the case of creating levy capacity, that is essentially money that we could raise that we're choosing not to. In that case, if you need to access that, the consequence of that is that people's taxes are going to go up. So, I think it's highly unlikely, in the future, that if we begin to create levy capacity, and certainly many communities have done this, when times get tough or whenever you need those funds, to, to access that means a increase above the 2.5 that people would normally get. So, that's, that's, you know, and, and I can say that I had a number of discussions, you know, back before I was the town manager with, with Mike Kyra, and, and those were always the concerns that we talked about, is when you're creating excess levy capacity, it's difficult to access that because you're, you're going to increase taxes more than they would normally go up.
Right. And I was talking to, to Mike Morris, and he was saying that you're looking at it going, instead of 2.5, you're looking at 5%. So, that's, yeah, that's an issue. And it also becomes an issue with the S&amp;P, the bond rating, that we want to make sure that we continue to get that positive bond rating as well. But I, you know, I think, I'm glad you explained it. I think it's important that the residents hear this and, and let's see what it looks like.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Is anybody else having?
Next is memo to the board, just a status on the situation with Russell disposal. Selectmen Eaton had asked about the status, so I wanted to provide this to the board. It basically has not changed. You'll recall that Russell has not been able to provide a performance bond. It doesn't appear, at least for the foreseeable future, they'll be in a position to do that. The services continue. We've not seen any uptick in complaints or indications that they're not performing. They continue to collect the trash, the recyclables, the leaf collection. I also reached out to my colleagues in the other two communities that I'm aware of who have Russell, both Chelsea and Walpole, and they're in the same situation. They have not seen any, they've not been able to obtain a bond from, from The next item is a memo regarding the AED units. You'll recall, back in the spring, summer, there was a request made to look into having AED devices at the various parks or playgrounds around town. And I've had a number of conversations with both the fire chief and the rec director. Bottom line on this is that these AED devices have to be in a climate-controlled environment because the mechanics, the batteries, the pads all rely upon, you know, a limited range of temperatures and so on. So, the other issue that we would clearly need to be mindful of is that whatever case that they're put in, if that was the route we were to choose, is that they need to be accessible to the public in an emergency. But to the extent they're too accessible, they're going to be walking. So, I don't, to this point, have not been able to come up with a good option for providing these devices at the various ballfields around town that is going to be reliable.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In light of what I just went through, this is a very hot button for me, but I was, I just want to state that I'm very thankful that the police department have one and their police cruisers. And I did not know that until... have one and their police cruisers. And I did not know that until after I was revived and Kevin did what he did. But, I just wanted to state that the police department has one in every cruiser, from what I understand. And that's important for the people out there to know that. Um, and I certainly understand the explanation of why we can't have them unattended at, at every ballpark, but I hope someday that every Pupwana coach, every baseball coach, um, has one in their bag and brings it with them, or at least one at the ballfield when there's a game going on. I, I hope someday that that happens. Um, and it's gonna be my mission to try to see if that can happen. The band, when they're marching in the parade, if they, if they need one. Um, all the different organizations. We know that the high school has them, so they're there. And every sporting event, like for Pupwana football right behind us, I believe they have to have a trainer on standby, if it's that trainer that has it with him. Cause I knew that this was a life-saving device. I'm, I was CPR certified, and as matter of fact, um, I had signed up for the CPR class that the police department put on this past Friday and Saturday. Um, I could not attend, um, and I know they had a waiting list, so I got in tou- in touch with the chief and they filled that class. But, it's important that the community knows how important these AEDs are. And, uh, I knew that prior, but, uh, what happened to me and my family, i- it's gonna be my mission. It, it really is. And we need to, we need to come up with some solutions, um, that they are at the ballfields. And I certainly understand the explanation, Jeff, don't get me wrong, cause it, it makes a lot of sense. But, if we can get the Pupwana, the baseball, the Little League, all the coaches, the hockey, every basketball, rec basketball, um, is a very popular in town, in all the rec events, to have an AED available close by is important. So, I just, I just wanna state that.
Uh, you know, I have to say this, and I understand where you're coming from, but, and I, I don't know, these also have to come with some sort of training.
Oh, I know that.
I, I mean, we can't, I'm sure we can buy as many as we want to go out to these coaches, and, but if they're not trained, then that becomes an issue.
You would think that a coach would need to be CPS or trainer.
You know, I understand your passion to have them, uh, wherever someone turns, but the training of it is, is one of the most important parts, I, I would imagine.
No, and, and I, you would think that, and, and my thought process, Kevin, is that those coaches are already CPR-trained, so they, somebody already know how to use that. And the community did put on a, the police department did put on a CPR classes, and there's talk about having more, and there, there should be more. Um, so, thank you.
Just to speak to that point about the training, I mean, and it's my understanding that it's not difficult to learn, but certainly people need to be aware of how to use these devices. Um, I had a conversation with Mike Woods, um, again, about, you know, this, you know, what, what the options are, and he commented about a situation that he experienced personally in one of the gyms, uh, in town here. He happened to be there and somebody had an episode, and they had an AED device there, but unfortunately, the person or people that, and no one was aware of how to properly utilize it, and so, at the end, it didn't really help this person.
Thank you.
Uh, next is, um, a memo from, uh, me to the board with regard to the, uh, replacement of the fire pumper. You'll recall that, uh, we have a two-thousand-two Pierce pumper, uh, that the manufacturer, uh, is part of their inspection process, uh, back late September, I believe it was, uh, indicated that due to the excessive rod on the frame, uh, it should be taken off the road, which it has been. Uh, we've been in the process ever since to, uh, try to, um, a- address that in a permanent way. Uh, initially, we were exploring the possibility of, um, uh, looking at one of the consortiums, uh, in, uh, reviewing this, this option with council. Uh, he reminded me that we, uh, we would need to confirm that the consortiums, the specifications that they issue, uh, have a provision for acceptance of trade-ins, uh, because, uh, if the specification doesn't provide for trade-ins, uh, then we would have to buy the vehicle outright and conduct a separate, um, process for trade-ins, and under our bylaws, money coming from those trade-ins, in that circumstance, uh, would just go to the capital stabilization fund. Uh, so, in doing, uh, some further review and, uh, I've identified this Houston Galveston Area Council Consortium from Texas. Um, there is a number of communities across the country, including many Massa- Massachusetts municipalities, that are part of this consortium. They provide a number of, um, goods and services, uh, ranging from trucks to, um, any number of services. Uh, they, uh, have in their bid specifications, uh, the allowance for trade-ins, uh, which would, uh, be advantageous to us because the plan, uh, that we have at this point is, uh, to go to the Finance Committee and request a transfer from the, uh, reserve account. You'll recall that the, uh, reserve account is six-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's appropriated at town meeting each year, and it's the Finance Committee that, uh, ultimately has authorization to tap into that. Uh, based upon, uh, what we expect, uh, from the trade-in vehicles, uh, we, the, the net cost of this, uh, vehicle would be approximately four-hundred-and-eighty, uh, five-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh, so, uh, that is the, uh, direction we're going in at this point. I've, uh, spoken with John Doherty and, uh, requested a, a meeting with the, uh, Finance Committee for December eighteenth, uh, and it would be my recommendation at that meeting, uh, to, uh, seek, uh, funding. Uh, one, and just to add to that, one of the other advantages of going that route is this, uh, um, the vendor that is on the list, bid list, uh, to provide these trucks would be able to provide a loaner. So, we've been, uh, really, um, advantaged through the good graces of a couple of our neighboring communities, that we've been able to borrow a truck, but I'm not sure how long that'll continue. Uh, next is, uh, a memo to the board, uh, referencing, you know, the, a draft inclusionary bylaw. Uh, this is something that Valerie Gingrich and her staff have been working on. Uh, I know she's had, uh, conversations with, uh, different, uh, groups, including, uh, some developers, um, to try to get a sense of what, um, is going to be, uh, practical and, and, um, and something that, uh, can move forward. Uh, so this is really just the introduction, if you will. She brought this forward at the Planning Board meeting from last week. Uh, the plan is to, uh, take comments. I think she's, uh, looking to, um, make arrangements with WCTV to, uh, talk about, uh, what the inclusionary zoning bylaw will do, and, um, she is scheduled to, um, come before this board on the fourteenth of January, uh, to talk to the board and entertain your comments. Uh, next is just a notice of appointment, uh, to a member for the Conservation Commission, Julie Flynn. Uh, you'll recall stepped down, uh, I think her last meeting was in November. Uh, so, uh, in her place, Laura Dewall is a licensed engineer, uh, has a background in the private sector, and, uh, I've, I've spoken with her. Uh, I think she's very qualified and will, uh, fit the bill. Uh, we have, uh, correspondence, uh, going to, uh, Barah Ram, the manager at, um, Michael's place. Uh, this has to do with, uh, a, actually some, uh, communications, uh, that Beverly Dalton, the administrative assistant, had, uh, with respect to the alcohol license. Uh, she was following up on, checking on the status of the license. Uh, initially was told by one of the staff that, um, uh, Mr. Ram was, uh, not the manager, uh, which clearly raised a red flag because, uh, in order to change managers, um, uh, it needs the permission of the Board of Selectmen and the, uh, ABCC. Uh, Mr. Ram stopped in the following day, um, and in the course of the conversation that she had with him, uh, she was told that, um, that he is the manager, but the two individuals that the employee referenced are partners, uh, in the business. Again, uh, in order to, um, change partners, there needs to be a filing with the Board of Selectmen and the, uh, ABCC. Uh, in consultation with, uh, council, uh, it was advised that, um, uh, Mr. Ram be, uh, instructed to, um, appear before the board for an informational, um, hearing. This isn't a, a public hearing, uh, but certainly an informational hearing to just understand, uh, what the circumstances are of the business. Um, as you know, the, uh, alcohol, uh, license will be coming up this evening, uh, for consideration. Uh, there's, uh, again, based upon my conversations with council, uh, there's no basis, um, to deny that, uh, license at this point. Um, these licenses, particularly on the alcohol licenses, are essentially a property right that can't be revoked unless there's, um, appropriate grounds. So, uh, this is really to understand what the particulars are in terms of the operation there, and if in fact there's been a change in either the management or, uh, the, uh, ownership, then the proper filings need to be provided.
Mr. Chairman, through you?
Yes.
Could you have Town Council advise me when you do summon Mr. Ram before the board? Should I just leave the room, sit in the audience, whatever Town Council, so, when that time comes?
Yeah, I, you know, I think, um, through the chair, uh, you, you may wanna have that conversation directly in terms of your potential.
Sitting here, yeah.
Yeah.
I, you know, I just, I'm, I would just leave the room, so that's what I would do. So, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I think that was the, the last of correspondence?
Yes.
So, we're on to Board to Consider.
Uh, this first one is, um, simply to, uh, get the board's, uh, approval to hold the, uh, presentation of the annual budget for February fourth, which would, as you know, in the past, uh, the budget presentation is a standalone meeting, uh, separate from your regular, uh, meetings.
Okay. So, we want a motion to accept?
Yes.
So, second by Mr. Eaton, second by Mr. Loud, any discussion? All in favor? Don't you announce.
Uh, next is a, uh, Board to Consider, uh, a conservation restriction, uh, for Spruce Farms. Uh, this, uh, as part of the, uh, Conservation subdivision, uh, is a requirement. Uh, in this case, the, uh, property is, uh, six po- uh, two-point-six-five acres will be designated as conservation, uh, of the total seven-point-three-four acres on the parcel. Uh, there'll be access, uh, to the Foster's Pond. There's actually a trail that will be, uh, designated for that purpose. There's a homeowners' association that will ultimately, uh, maintain and be responsible for this. Uh, Housing and Community Development at the state level has already, uh, approved this, but it does require, um, the approval of the board.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the conservation restriction?
Some will.
Second.
Okay, um, made by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Sorry, Mr. Bendel.
Happy to meet my colleague on his birthday.
Any discussion? All in favor? Don't you announce?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys, don't mind.
We'll do as well. Stall a little bit by signing the forms while.
Yes.
Wait for Mr. Loud to come back.
Important dates?
There was a notary. Yes, yeah, uh, so Beverly isn't over.
Okay.
Yes, I'm signing this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She wants you.
Important dates?
Important dates, yeah.
Uh, so, important dates. Uh, Selectman Bendel, uh, mentioned earlier the, um, i- issue of, uh, folks, uh, given the weather circumstances, not being able to get their leaves, um, picked up. Uh, in talking with, uh, Mike Woods, uh, Public Works Director, um, we are extending the hours at the, um, uh, drop-off, so this, uh, through December fifteenth, uh, that will be the last date for this season, uh, to drop off leaves at Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. Uh, December twenty-fourth, town offices, uh, close at noontime. Uh, December twenty-fifth, uh, is Christmas Day, town offices are closed. Uh, they will also be closed again on January first for New Year's Day. Uh, and then, uh, January seventh through the eighteenth, we have a curbside collection of Christmas trees. Uh, next meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be January fourteenth, uh, here in room nine, seven o'clock. Uh, January twenty-first, uh, offices are closed in honor of Martin Luther King Day. Uh, January twenty-eighth is another Selectmen's meeting, here, room nine, seven PM. And then, as was earlier noted, February fourth will be the, uh, presentation of the fiscal twenty, uh, budget.
And also, I like, I wanna mention, since we're talking about important dates, the skating rink, I was gonna bring it up under important, uh, under new business, but the skating rink looks great. Out, uh, near, on the Rotary Park, near the Fire and Police Station, looks like it's all been flooded and ready to go on. I know we don't have a special, um, dedication or kickoff, uh, of, you know, of all the Selectmen first, skating on the ice, because I don't know how to skate anyways. Um, but, when is that, is that gonna be available? Does, do people need to know that they can get on that ice?
It is, uh. Yeah, it's actually, I think it gets some use over the, uh, over the weekend, from, uh, what I'm told. I happened to be over there on Saturday. I didn't, uh, see anybody Saturday afternoon, but I'm, I, I happened to run into Jamie McGoldy and, um, a few of the DPW folks, and they indicated that there were some folks skating there early Saturday and, and yesterday as well, so.
And it's freeskate, it's not hockey.
Right.
It's open, you freeskate around, and I think there are lights.
Yes.
That might be on that as well, right?
Yes.
And I don't know the times of the lights, do you know?
Uh, well, so, the rink is open from eight AM to nine PM, so lights will be on till nine.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, while we're on the topic, I wanna compliment you, uh, and, uh, former colleague, Ms. O'Connell, and the other members of the Intel Committee who I think put this together to make this possible, so, kudos to you guys. This is a fantastic addition to the, the community, and, uh, I, I think it'll be, uh, well-used over the next couple of weeks, and, uh, I think it's a great addition to the town. So, thank you and the members of that committee, bringing this forward.
Okay, back to, um, uh, Board to Consider, number eight, I believe we're on.
Uh, yes, so the next one is authorizing the Chair to execute the, uh, this is, uh, Housing Opportunities Program Compliance Certificate. Uh, this is a, uh, document, uh, that is signed by the Chair for a change in ownership of a, uh, property that, uh, is an affordable unit. It happens to be, uh, over at the Shawshing Commons, um, so in, in compliance with the requirements, it establishes what the sale price, uh, will be, and, uh, everything is in order at this point. Uh, just needs a, a vote, uh, of the Board to authorize the Chair to sign the cer- uh, compliance certificate.
Okay, is there a motion?
No more.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Eaton, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Don't you announce.
All right, so you just need to sign here.
Okay.
Next is, uh, that's gonna be, yeah, it'll be Beverly. Uh, next is, uh, Board to Consider Designate a Rep- Designating a Representative to Serve on the Wilmington Memorial Library Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. This is an, uh, process that Tina Stewart, uh, has gone through. This is a process that Tina Stewart has gone through, I believe the last time was five, three, five years ago?
2014.
2014.
Roughly.
And it's a process that really seeks to kind of assess where they are, what their mission is, whether they need to modify it to any degree. There'll be three sessions where she's looking for representation from the Finance Committee, from the Board of Selectmen, and others, and so, she is inviting the Board to designate a representative to serve on that committee.
Do we have anybody wishing to serve on that committee?
Yeah, I served on in 2014. I thought it was a really great experience. If there was somebody else that wanted to do it, I would certainly defer, because I think it's a valuable experience, but if not, I'd be more than happy to do it.
I'm happy to nominate Mr. Eaton, if he's so willing to accept.
I believe he is.
Quite eager.
So, I don't know that we need to necessarily take a motion on that, just voluntary to serve on that committee. Thank you, Mr. Eaton, for doing that, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. This is the moment you've been waiting for.
Yeah.
This is the licensing process. So, as, as you know, this is, there's a number of different licenses that require renewal, and I would suggest that, as has been done in the past, that after you take the votes, we can go into my office and you can sign them there. Beverly can kind of quarterback the signing process, given the number of licenses.
So, you want to take these up one at a time?
Yes, so these, well, we...
Are we taking them in groups?
I think we can take them...
Clubs, packages, restaurants?
Yeah, let's take them up in, in groups. So, first of all, starting with the all-alcohol licenses, we have all-alcohol club licenses, we have two. Fordham Associates, Inc., DBA Aleppo Temple, 99 Fordham Road, and 4982 Building Associates, Inc., DBA Knights of Columbus, 112 Middlesex Avenue. The recommendation from the chief is, he actually indicates, here listed below the alcohol licenses that are up for renewal by the Board of Selectmen for the year 2019. Each license was provided, licensee was, provided with a copy of Chapter 5, Section 53 of the Inhabitant Bylaws of the Town of Wilmington, revised, and were advised to contact Lieutenant Charles Fury. The bylaws require managers of the alcohol establishments to undergo a fingerprint-based criminal history check. All applicants have passed the basic review of the license and are listed below. I have underlined the names of managers who have not submitted the fingerprint background checks as required, and in the, we do have, under the 4982 Building Associates, now that one is still, remains, right, Beverly? Yeah, so that one is, we don't have the background, the fingerprint background check on that. It's my understanding it's in the process, and I don't believe there's any basis to hold this up, but it will be, the license will be held pending receipt of that information. So, I would recommend the granting of these two licenses.
Okay, is there a motion? There's a motion by Mr. Loud, seconded by...
Second.
Mr. McCoy, with the stipulation that the fingerprint would be forthcoming from the Knights of Columbus, the individual over there. Any discussion? All in favor? Let you announce.
Next, we have the all-alcohol package store licenses. There are five. The first being Everich LLC, DBA Colonial Park Liquors, 35 Lowell Street, Unit 9. 211 Lowell Street Corp., DBA Eastgate Liquors. 211 J, Lowell Street. Shoprite Liquors, Inc., DBA Eli's Country Store. 381 Middlesex Ave. Supertarget Liquors of Massachusetts, DBA Target. 210 Balladvale Street. And then, NR Wilmington, Inc., DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirits, 258 Main Street. And this also, per the police chief, let's see, we are still looking for the fingerprint background, correct, on that one?
There are Target?
Target, yeah.
Yes, but manager's not there, so the...
The new one, so, yeah.
Yes.
So, again, similar to the previous one, we'll hold it pending the fingerprinting for the new manager. So, I, based upon the chief's review, I would recommend approval of these five renewals.
Motion to approve with the, again, the caveat with Target and the fingerprinting.
So moved.
Second.
Led by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? You announce.
The next one is the all-alcohol restaurants, so I would suggest perhaps taking these up in, in two categories. One, so Mr. McCoy will probably want to refrain from voting on, on Michael's Place. So, is the pleasure to take them up individually, or would you like me to take them all up, excluding Michael's, and then take that up separately?
Let's take them all up, excluding Michael's.
So, the first is Restaurant of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub, 144 Lowell Street. The next is A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA Golden Ginger Restaurant, 225 Main Street. Summern Berry, Inc., I'm sorry. The next one would be Pacific Sunrise, Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 211 E, Lowell Street, AKA 217 Lowell Street. Ponchos, Inc., DBA Ponchos Cantina, Unit 7, 206 Balladvale Street. BGP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern, 300 Lowell Street. C&amp;C Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. LLM Inc., DBA Tremesos, 2 Lowell Street. And Greensauce, we, Greensauce, Beverly, is that one?
Which one?
Right, is that, that's, they have what they need on that one? I thought that was being placed on hold, because they're not...
The chief's not concerned because they're not...
Oh, okay, that's right.
It would be done before their, before their licenses released.
Greensauce, Inc., DBA Casablanca Mexican Restaurant, 207 Main Street. So, all of those, the chief has reviewed. Yes, Tremesos is on, is a similar situation, they need the background, the fingerprinting. So, again, I would recommend approval, subject to holding that one pending the fingerprinting background.
Okay, is there a motion on that?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? Let you announce.
The next one, under the same category of all-alcohol restaurant, is Summern Berry, Inc., DBA Michael's Place, 110 Lowell Street. This one, again, this fingerprinting is something we're still waiting on, but I would recommend approval pending, we'll hold the license pending that information.
Okay, is there a motion? Yep.
What do we need from next month for the same license?
So, the meeting next month will be to find out from the managers who, who in fact are the partners of the organization, if anything has changed from their, the status that they have on record, because if the manager, for example, has changed, that would require an application to the Board of Selectmen. If the partnership structure has changed, then that would require an application to the Board, so it's just an informational meeting.
Okay. Would it also go to the ABCC as well, on the change?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to accept with the understanding that those conditions need to be met?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Eaton, seconded by...
Myself.
Mr. Bendel. Any other discussion? All in favor? And that's four. Four, one abstain. Mr. McCoy, already abstained.
Next, we have automatic amusement device, and this is, the first one is K-1 Speed, Inc., Fordham Road, they have 14 devices, one and only, I guess. So, this one is, again, the chief indicates upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of 2019 license application to offer automatic amusement devices.
Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
One billiard room, again, K-1 Speed, Inc., 40, Fordham Road, four tables. Chief recommends approval.
So moved.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Discussion, all in favor? You announce.
Next, our Class 1 Vehicle Sales. We have two. Doobie Auto Group, Inc., DBA Bill Doobie Hyundai, 271 Main Street, and Semino Automotive, Inc., DBA Cornerstone Automotive and Cornerstone Mitsubishi, 580 Main Street. The police chief indicates upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends renewal of the following Class 1 Vehicle License Renewal Applications.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Next, our Class 2 Vehicle Sales. There are eight listed here. Wilmington Shell, Inc., DBA Advanced Auto Technologies, 779 Woburn Street. B&amp;L Enterprises, 880 Main Street. Forest Auto Repair, 600 Main Street. Heavy Equipment Connection, Inc., 239 Andover Street. Imperial Auto LLC, 845 Woburn Street, Suite D. J&amp;E Services Corp., 619 Rear Main Street. Triple Nickel Auto Body and Repair LLC, 555 Main Street. Naya Inc., DBA Z&amp;S Gas and Service, 603 Main Street. These are also recommended for approval by both the police chief and the building inspector.
And we don't have to add to the list the AAA that we approved this evening, do we?
No.
Just to keep it in the...
We're, we're good.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, 40 common victualers. Again, I think in this one, it would probably make sense to take them up all except for Michael's Place. Just read through the list here. 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub, 144 Lowell Street. Anjam Corp., DBA AJ's Kitchen, 162 Lowell Street. Fordham Associates, Inc., DBA Aleppo Temple, 99 Fordham Road. Sale LLC, DBA As Good As It Gets Cafe, 35 Lowell Street. Masteron Corporation and LBK LLC, DBA Burger King, 280 Lowell Street. Hung Tay Inc., DBA Chinawak, 329 Main Street. Krish Convenience, Inc., DBA The Corner Store. 296 Shawshank Ave., Suite 1. Country Chef Restaurant, 139 Main Street. Adam Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan Donuts, 211 Lowell Street. DJQ Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts, 663 Concord Street. Cannon Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts, 357 Middlesex Avenue. Jane Marie Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts, 206 Balladvale Street. C&amp;C Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan Donuts, 195 Main Street. Wilmington Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan Donuts, 321 Main Street. A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA Golden Ginger Restaurant, 225 Main Street. Wilmington Heavenly Donuts LLC, DBA Heavenly Donuts, 579 Main Street. Jelv Enterprises LLC, DBA Wilmington House of Pizza, 325 Main Street. Jasmine Cuisine, Inc., DBA Jasmine Cuisine Restaurant, 35 Lowell Street. K-1 Speed, Inc., 40, Fordham Road. 4982 Building Associates, Inc., DBA Knights of Columbus, 112 Middlesex Avenue. Dulcak LLC, DBA La Rosa's, Unit 211, 269 Main Street. TH McCoy Restaurant Group LLC, DBA McDonald's Restaurant, 212 Main Street. Modash Caf, Cafe, 16 Upton Drive. Mona's Kitchen, 66 U, Concord Street. Nick's Pizza Roast Beef and Subs, 331 Main Street. Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 211 E, Lowell Street. Ponchos, Inc., DBA Ponchos Cantina, Unit 7, 206 Balladvale Street. PR Restaurant LLC, DBA Panera's Bread, 228 Main Street. KQ, Inc., DBA Peter's Pizza Roast Beef and Seafood, 2 Lowell Street. BJP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern, 300 Lowell Street. St. Moses, Inc., DBA Rizzo's Restaurant, Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza, 3R Church Street, Units 1 and 2. C&amp;C Restaurant Group, Inc., DBA Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. Charlie's Two Corporation, DBA Smart's Super Beef, 279 Main Street. Starbucks Corporation, DBA Starbucks Coffee, 253 Main Street. 337 Main Street, Inc., DBA Subway, 337 Main Street. Watertown Enterprises, DBA Subway, 206 Balladvale Street, Unit 2. CDC Diner, DBA Sunnyside Cafe, 2 Jefferson Road. Target Corporation, 210 Balladvale Street. And LLM, Inc., DBA Tremesos, 2 Lowell Street. And the recommendations are in favor from the Board of Health and the building inspector.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. McCoy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Eaton. The only question I have is I didn't see Casablanca Mexican Restaurant.
They have a file.
They have not, but they applied for the alcohol, but not the food box.
I have one question also. Welta EJ's Pizza on Jefferson Ave.
They don't have, they don't have any seats in there.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Okay, and then, the, the one that we, the other one to consider is Summern Berry, Inc., DBA Michael's Place, 110 Lowell Street.
A motion?
So moved.
On the street, and seconded by Mr. Loud. Any discussion? All in favor? That's four, four, and one abstention from Mr. McCoy.
Thank you. And then, we have four entertainment licenses. The first being Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 211 E, Lowell Street. BJP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern, 300 Lowell Street. C&amp;C Restaurant Group, Inc., DBA Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. LLM, Inc., DBA Tremesos, 2 Lowell Street. The recommendation from the police chief, based upon his review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of these 2019 entertainment license applications.
Okay, the, I guess the only question I have on this one is the Ponchos Cantina. They came in, yeah, the mariachi band, they came in last month, I believe, for an entertainment license.
So, that was, the license expires next December, December 19.
Oh, okay, so that's already...
Renew next year.
All right, I didn't, that's good. Okay, is there a...
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Bendel. All in favor? Let you announce. We're still on board to consider.
Right.
Number 11 looks like. K-1 Speed.
Yes, so this is a new renewal, as well as his first Sunday license. K-1 Speed.
I think that this is where the selectmen should get together and have a go-kart competition. I don't know about-
Couple of us might have a tough time fitting it in.
This is true.
I could do that better than I could skate, so.
All right.
There's no issues with this, recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Laut, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous. And we're-
Sign that one, that's just on the chairs, you can sign right here.
Right there.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're on now to public comments. Does anyone wish to speak under public comments? Yes, if you, please identify your name and address.
I'm from Chestnut Street. I'll talk to you about, if you go back to Buttersboro Bridge business. I've been on Chestnut Street for 40 years. I've never seen it so bad with traffic. This summer, we have trucks going all the time, going up and down to the different developments. I have five grandchildren, three of them, and Tom. I have one, she's three years old, Sophie. I'm always afraid she's gonna run out, chase that ball, something, and have an accident. The police are very good, I know they check on things. But when you build this new bridge, right now, there was a study done a few years ago, 15 years ago, 700 cars a day. We know there's more than that today. I know there's no solution, I don't know what to tell you about. As a resident of Chestnut Street for a little long time, you know Mr. Yar, you live in Chestnut Street. It's a real problem. What the people do, when they're going up Buttersboro, down Chestnut Street, going up Buttersboro, Marion Street. So you know, by all ways, they go around. I do have a solution. You put atollables. You charge the car $1, the truck $2, motorcycles just let them go. I want to ask you one other thing. I'm a senior citizen and a disabled veteran. When you feel make your decisions on affordable housing, please consider us. We're very good, Mr. Yar. Because we're all, you know, you know, Buttersboro, we're like empty nesters. We love to sell our houses, but where do you go? You know? And Deming Way is great, but the way down there is terrible. I know I have a neighbor, he's by the way, two years ago. So it's tough, you know, it's tough on, it's true, you can have another Deming Way, but not possible. But if you can push this affordable housing for the seniors and the veterans. Speaking of, you know, the senior, I would appreciate it, appreciate it. That's all, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Anybody else wish to speak? Public comments? Onto new business. Does anyone wish to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and happy birthday to my colleagues. I do want to clear one thing up. I'm actually younger than Mr. Eaton, although it doesn't look it, but happy birthday to both you and Mr. McCoy.
You don't look at Mr. Bendel.
Another positive note, I want to congratulate our town moderator, Mr. Peterson, and his family on a new addition. They just had their second daughter, so my congratulations to him and his wife, Kelly. Fantastic news for our town moderator. And I would like to make a quick request that we, in a future meeting, again, talk about the possibility of an Economic Development Committee. I look forward to that conversation. And then lastly, fantastic couple of weekends here in town, so many events, probably too many to mention. My family and I just had a fantastic time at, you know, tree lighting and the Festival of Trees and the Breakfast with Santa and Farmer's Market, and we went to two different Toys for Tots events. It's just been an awesome couple of weeks here in town with so many good things and so many people coming out to support the events, so thank you to all the groups who put them on, and I certainly hope it'll continue through over the next couple of weeks, and want to make sure, I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas to my colleagues here and to everybody at home. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Ed, I'm glad to see you back, and I hope you and your family have a great Christmas. I hope everyone has a great Christmas, as a matter of fact. And Mr. Eaton, today is your birthday, happy birthday, you looking guy over there, you know?
Thanks.
And the other thing is, I'd like to let folks know, I did meet Mr. Krappman, who's a selectman in Tewksbury who ran for representative with myself. We both came up short. I met him. There was a wager, he bet that the Tewksbury Redmen would beat the Wildcats, but I'm a Wildcat through in and out. I know they were an underdog, they have a great team, so I honored that bet and I ate at the Lantern Restaurant on Route 38 in Tewksbury. So we had breakfast and it was nice, and I'm happy to put that wager up again, him next year. Thank you. Go Wildcats, man.
I want to wish you, Mr. McCoy, I believe your birthday is tomorrow?
Yes, it is.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
More importantly, I want to wish my wife a happy birthday, her birthday's on Wednesday, so, so happy birthday, Sarah. I did want to also mention the Santa Parade, that our police department, our fire department, our DPW, I don't believe anybody else, I think those are the three. That was, it's been a fantastic ad, I think, throughout our community. I know our two-year-old was, had, it was one of those things that the town just did, and it was somebody's idea, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but I-
Officer Furman.
Yeah, just a fantastic thing, just to have people in an extremely cold December day, just coming out of the, and waiting in the front yard for Santa to come by, so that, I thought was fantastic. And I congratulate the Soul Sisters Running Club on a fantastic first annual 5K, so it was very, very well attended, almost 400 runners, so.
Thank you. I also would like to thank everyone out there, but I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and happy and healthy New Year. And I have a very special shout-out for a veteran who happens to be my brother-in-law, who happened to just retire. 40 years in the Coast Guard. Not only is he a great human being, but he's a great father, uncle, brother, godfather, grandfather. He's got two beautiful granddaughters I know he's gonna spend a lot of time with, but he recently retired, less than a month ago. He retired as a special agent in charge of the U.S. Coast Guard Investigation Services. I joked my brother-in-law, Rick, Rick Cox, Richard Dennis Cox Jr., as I call him, Rick. He had a gold leaf on his business card, and that was my get-out-of-jail-free card everywhere I traveled if I ever needed him, but to a great, great human being, I was very happy to be able to do the shout-out. We're having a party in the coming weeks for him, well-deserved, and thank you for his service and his family's commitment to the country, so thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I want to thank you for your comments about affordable housing. Believe me, we're all working on it, it's a difficult issue, but where we hear you, we've been working on it as well, so. And I too want to comment on what was mentioned about the tree lighting and the Festival of Trees, this Breakfast with Santa, I think they had a Santa's Workshop, or are they having it? They had it. Just, it's great volunteerism in this community, and thank you to all those organizations and the individuals that step up and make Wilmington what it is. The Santa Parade was unbelievable, I heard the sirens coming down Woburn Street where I live, and I went out with the dog, and we were just there waving to Santa as he drove by, so this is just another prime example of Wilmington at its finest. I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. And with that, we already did important dates, so I think we're all set to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. McCoy.
Make sure we tell our wife, she's gonna be here for another hour signing all those licenses.
That's right, we're gonna be signing all those licenses, so we'll be here for another hour.
All right, good.
And that's it, is there a vote of approval to adjourn? All right, and that's unanimous, and thank you, and good night.